Two Commissioners. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners. Good morning, Ron. October 23rd work session to order and thank you for all, thank you all for being here. Invited guests and elected officials, we have Sheriff Gullidge and Judge Dean Bucci. It's a privilege to have Pastor Gene Morehouse here. He'll be coming up to give our invocation in a second. And Brian, if you could bring forward the list of folks wishing to speak. If you have a phone that might be turned on, please turn it off and I'll do the same. If you're able to stand, Pastor Morehouse will lead us in the invocation of prayer.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, as we look around, we see all these different signs that have popped up over the election. We ask, Lord, that you watch over those who are running, help them to be truthful. And as we watch the airwaves, we see maybe truths, half-truths and lies. May we separate them and may we realize, Father, that you are the Creator, that you love us, you care about us, and you want to strengthen each and every one of us. Help us to live a path that would be pleasing to you. Help the Commissioners and their attorney up here to be men and women of Christian faith, that they love the Lord, serve the Lord, and serve our communities well. We thank you, Lord, for your love, your compassion, and the gift of your Son. In the name of your Son, Jesus, all God's people said, amen. Let's pledge to the flag, please. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated and I'd like to make one quick announcement.
Yes, sir. And I didn't say you were-
I can't stay because over at Greenbrook, I have Bible study. We're in Revelation, the nineteenth chapter, and that's every Tuesday. So this meeting is only once a month, right? So I can see you all there next week at Greenbrook. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Pastor Morehouse with Westside Christian Church. Thanks so much for being here. The October 9th, 2018 work session minutes and the October 9th, 2018 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under the positive Paulding segment, my favorite, we have a special announcement that took place out at the airport Friday before last. Let's watch that together.
We are thrilled and we are excited and we are honored to have Governor Deal here. He has done so much for Georgia over his eight years.
Thank you for taking time to be with us here today. What a beautiful airport facility you have. What a gorgeous room this is. I usually go to smaller airports and we get in an oversized broom closet. You have a tremendous facility here and I compliment you on that. This is a team effort. And what we're talking about doing today is one that I believe will benefit not just your immediate area, but will benefit the state of Georgia as a whole. And that is, we're announcing today that we're going to create an aviation academy right here at Silver Comic Field. This will be approximately a $35 million capital investment. It will be another example of the partnership between the state and local level officials, and it will certainly be something that all of us will see the benefits of in the next several years. I want to thank Commissioner Carmichael and the members of the Paulding Commission for donating the land that will be needed to house this academy. Now, why an aviation academy? Well, the truth of the matter is because we need it. We are fortunate that Georgia has and is the home of Delta Airlines, Gulfstream, Pratt and Whitney, and a number of others that are related to the activities of the airlines and aircraft industry, both public and private types of aircraft. And they have been very successful in our state and they're all continuing to grow. You're going to have a lot of young people who look at this as a real opportunity, and I am pleased that it's going to be happening right here in your community. Thank you very much.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the literacy proclamation to Pastor Mike Faulkner. And as Mike comes up, I'm going to read it and then, Mike, you can say whatever words you'd like to at the podium. "In connection with National Family Literacy Day, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners has signed the following proclamation: Whereas November 1st is recognized as National Family Literacy Day, and whereas the county of Paulding desires to improve the literacy levels of its citizens, and whereas the level of adult literacy skills contributes to the emotional, physical, and economic well-being of our citizens, and whereas the Paulding Literacy Council, in conjunction with the Certified Literate Community Program, Paulding County Library System, and the Adult Education Program will assist greatly in increasing adult literacy skills of the citizens and thereby increase community productivity. Therefore, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners and I as the chairman do hereby proclaim the day, November 1st, 2018, as Family Literacy Day in the Paulding County, in Paulding County, Georgia, and endorse Paulding Literacy Council, the Paulding Library System, the Adult Education Program, and support the participation of the citizens of Paulding County in these programs." Mike, thank you for being here. Tell us a little bit more.
Thank you, sir. It's a fortunate statement for our community that 8% of the people in Paulding County are functionally illiterate. That represents about 20,000 people, which is a sad thing. It's not anything to do with the county itself, it's just a reality of people, where people find themselves.
And our desire with the Paulding County Literacy Council is to aid those people in improving their reading skills. We have, right now, 12 adults working with 12 individuals who need that assistance. We have many more volunteers who would be willing to work with people in a public place to help them either learn to read or improve their reading skills. In addition to the literacy efforts that we put forth in the county, we also seek to partner with the GED program to help people obtain their GED so that they might function better in the community for themselves and their families and our community as a whole. And I appreciate the Commissioners supporting this. If I could just mention, too, we would encourage people to read on November 1st. And we have an email address, rapaulding@gmail.com, which you can report minutes or hours that you read that day to us, and we're going to compile that and report through the news, local newspaper and our Facebook page, the number of people and the amount of time that they invest in reading. We're also sponsoring an event on November 8th in partnership with Abney Elementary School at the Crossroads Library and the Dallas Public Library, inviting families to come and bring their children to join in a reading program there. We've got volunteers that are going to read to kids and encourage them to participate in some reading games that we have. So that'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 that night. Thank you very much for your support and appreciate your help in raising the awareness of this in our county.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. You come up.
Thank you.
We want to take a picture here.
Thank you.
So we got it right there. Thanks again, Mike. The Board of Commissioners would like to congratulate the Paulding Judicial Circuit Drug Court Program, Deputy Clint Barker with the winning, with winning the Star Award, and Judge Dean Bucci is going to present this award.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Skipper. Actually Clint has already received the award. And Clint, will you come on up with me? We are governed by a council of accountability court judges, and every year there's a conference in Athens. And at this year's conference, they presented a Star Award. And the way it works is for each accountability court, and there's well over 100 accountability court programs in the state, there are certain members of the team. There's one surveillance officer, we've now grown to have two, but they only give this award to one position for all the accountability court programs in the state. So only one surveillance officer across the state received a Star Award, and that was Paulding County's very own Clint Barker that we're really proud of. We've invited some of our participants to be here this morning. I know we've got at least one graduate. And is there any participant that had anything to say to Clint or about Clint? I'm going to call on Chris if no one volunteers. Where's Chris at? There he is. All right, well, you're a graduate, so I'll volunteer you. Stand up.
I mean, he single-handedly helped me turn my life around. He would come to my house and talk to me for hours, and it never was-
Come on up, Chris. Why don't you come on up here and use the microphone, so start over. I appreciate it. They're starting to put you on the spot, right?
Well, I mean, he would come to my house and talk to me for hours. I was having a really hard time when I first come into program, fell in drug tests, and it never was, you ain't going to be able to do it, we're going to send you to prison. It was always, you're better than this. And two years later, I just graduated and with his help, I was able to do that. Thank you.
I would just like to thank the sheriff, the judge, for allowing me to do this job. Without them allowing me to do it, I wouldn't be able to go spend time on the porches and at the kitchen tables talking with the, our participants. I'm much more comfortable doing that than this today. I'd rather be at their homes, helping them get through their struggles daily and getting the result that we got with Chris. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you.
Let's just take a quick second. And anybody in the program, y'all stand just to thank you for taking that step. Thank you, Dean Bucci.
Dean, it's obvious that this, this program's making a big difference here in the county. I just want to say thank you once again.
Thank you. And we couldn't do it if y'all didn't let us do it, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, the last couple of years, I had an opportunity to meet Chris out in the community, working on cars. And Chris has shared a lot of his stories with me and just shared a lot of things that's gone on and a lot about Dean, Mr. Dean, Judge Dean Bucci. And we just had some good conversations. And all of you that are in it, there may have been an award that was given today, but you guys are the ones that need the award for stepping up and getting in it and Chris staying in it and getting through the process. Because I know, at the end of the day, there's a lot of rewards that come to you when it comes to getting good friendships and family and good quality of life. So Chris, I hold you in high regard. And those of you that are in the program, thanks for being in it. I know we gave an award today. Thank you for what you're doing, but thanks to y'all that are sticking in the program and your friends that gather around you to help you get through this process. May God continue to bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Erica Wilson for her work as Secretary of the Paulding County GUCC. And Ms. Lori Ashmore, the Director of the Water Department, is going to help make this presentation.
Okay, Erica. Got to come up in front and center. Erica's one of our behind-the-scenes folks normally, so a little, little, little uncomfortable there, but let me just take a second and tell you about the GUCC. It's actually an extension of the Utility Location and Coordination Council of the American Public Works Association. The members include utilities such as ours, contractors, the telephone company, power, the cable company, anybody who's working in, in that right-of-way on, on utilities. And Michael Creighton, the president of our local GUCC, was supposed to be here this morning, but he's had a family emergency, so I am going to share some of the comments that he was prepared to share with you this morning. Every year, the GUCC recognizes one person serving in each of the leadership roles in each of the regions of the state. We're in Region 6. And Region 6 is Bartow, Cherokee, Floyd, Gilmer, Northwest Georgia, Paulding, Pickens, and West Georgia. And Michael's shared with me the pride that he has to be Chair for the last eight years. And Erica has been Secretary for each of those eight years with him. He said that the, he believes that the UCC, Paulding UCC, is a huge success and benefit to all utilities that work in our county. With that being said, it would not be possible without the efforts that Erica makes in preparing for each meeting. Erica assures that we have a sponsor for the meeting, and she works with that sponsor to have the meals planned and ready. She keeps our email contacts up to date and sends out our meeting agenda and the reminders for each monthly meeting. Erica frequently makes new contacts, inviting people to attend that would benefit from the shared information that we discuss. Erica also works to have a speaker lined up for a short presentation at, at each meeting and maintains a strong relationship with Paulding DOT, which proves beneficial to all. One of the GUCC Board of Directors also went on to say, Erica's attitude is always one of service with a smile. She assists the chairman, Michael Creighton, in making the meeting one of the best in the state. Her type of dedication to the local UCC is admired and very much appreciated by the GUCC Board. And so I wanted to take an opportunity to thank Erica and to recognize her as Secretary for Region 6.
Thank you, Lori. So a very handsome plaque here, as some of your teammates are coming up here. It says, "The Georgia Utilities Coordinating Council presents Secretary of the Year Award, Erica Wilson, Paulding County Water Systems, in appreciation of service on the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, Region 6." Under invited guests, we have Mr. Don Vincent, our Paulding County Representative on the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, and our Region 1 Advisory Council. He's going to give us a few updates. Thank you for being here, Mr. Vincent.
First and foremost, I feel honored to represent Paulding County on an advisory council for our Department of Behavioral Health. I have personal experience in that field for quite a number of years from a lived experience with my son. He's 35 years old and has been diagnosed with schizophrenia since the age of 19. And schizophrenia is one of the most devastating mental illnesses that I believe a person could ever have. And he has had a rough time with his illness. And until yesterday, he was incarcerated for the last two years, 10 months and 12 days of his life. The last portion of it since June 5th solely because he was mentally ill. I volunteer my time to advocate for better mental health care and bring awareness of mental illness to reduce the stigma that's associated with. There is a lot of misinterpretation, misunderstanding of what actually mental illness is. It is not a character flaw. Severe mental illnesses such as schizophrenia is definitely a circuitry and dysfunctional problem with inside the human brain. We're all familiar with, I would say dementia and Alzheimer's disease, which is a disease of the brain, and we quite readily accept that analogy, that it is definitely an illness. I promote an understanding because I actually study the brain circuitry involved particularly with psychosis, which may be called audio-verbal hallucinations, when you hear something. I have actually seen studies that they will take an individual and place them in a soundproof room that is susceptible to hearing voices and do a functional MRI on your brain, and take another individual that is hearing the voices, just as you and I are, or you're listening to me right now, and the same areas of the brain will light up. It's just they don't have the external stimulation to produce the sound in the brain, but yet they still hear it. The sad part of it is, the voices that they hear in the culture of the United States are never voices that are, "You did a good job," or anything else like that. And these can be constant, where they are very demeaning, and it's very difficult for the individuals such as my son. The medications that they have to take in order to combat the psychosis have severe side effects. And my son has been through every single crisis management center in North Georgia at one time or another. He's been in all of the state hospitals, from Atlanta North at one time or another, and in also another state of Ohio. My son didn't ask to be mentally ill, it just happened to him. There's a genetic predisposition that you may acquire an illness such as his, but then there is also environmental triggers associated that may trigger it off. You can have two twins, one may develop the illness and one may not, but there's definitely an increased risk in that. And that's what I, I try to promote, a better understanding. And I want to thank the Council for Commissioners for allowing me to represent the county. And our Department of Behavioral Health, they're an organization that is supposed to provide services for those who are the least fortunate in society, sorry, that, that need services. And I'm just going to read a little bit about how Georgia's mental health care stacks up in the nation. Unmet need, Georgia ranks 18th. Nearly 1 in 5 adults with mental illness are unable to access treatment. Alabama ranks 10th. Uninsured adults, Georgia ranks 46th. 24% of adults with mental illness do not have health insurance. Virginia ranks 23rd. Untreated mental illnesses, Georgia ranks 46th. 61.6% of adults with mental illness receive no treatment. North Carolina ranks number 6th. Overall access, Georgia ranks 47th in overall access to mental health care. Workforce capacity, Georgia ranks 48th, meaning that only one mental health provider for every 850 residents. And I'm going, Georgia ranks 34th. I'm also going to add on to that statistic that there is one psychiatrist in our state for 9,600 individuals. I'm pretty sure that ranks at the bottom of the country. Cost, Georgia ranks last. 32% of Georgians with a disability do not see a doctor due to cost in 2017. Missouri ranks 29th. Now, I'm going to give a statistic specifically because I primarily focus on the more serious mental illnesses such as schizophrenia. The average incident rate is 1% of our population is diagnosed with schizophrenia. That means 1 out of every 100 people will acquire schizophrenia. So if I would take the population of Paulding County of 160,000-plus, that means we have 1,600 people living in this county with schizophrenia. How many of you here know an individual that has been diagnosed with schizophrenia? Raise your hand. Okay. I wonder where all the other ones are. It's probably because they're hid from society, because society rejects them. We don't know how to handle their psychosis, we think they're crazy, but they are actually human beings, just as you and I. So what I am attempting to do in our Department of Behavioral Health, which I have met with David Ralston twice, and I understand, and I'm not knocking the department, but they do take care of those who are mentally ill, but they have difficulties with those who have a severe persistent mental illness. For example, our state has been for eight years now under the scrutiny of the Department of Justice in a civil suit with our Department of Behavioral Health for the ill care that was provided for those with developmental disabilities, and those were serious persistently mentally ill. That's an SPMI, a common term used in that settlement. They declared that there was 9,000 individuals in the target population that were mentally ill that were to be served discreetly in that settlement agreement. The majority of, of those end up homeless and acquire and need housing. They can't acquire the housing. There were supposed to be 9,000 beds. June 5th last year, I was shocked when the court allowed my son to be placed in rehabilitation and found out through a list that I was handed with what was called an intensive treatment residential program for my son, that by count, there was only 73 beds in our state available. And this is actually the list that I was handed. It's at that point in time that I found how disorganized and lack of leadership, as described by Mr. Ralston, that we had in our Department of Behavioral Health. And I've taken it upon myself to volunteer my time to the best of my ability to assist in the state of- in the state of providing better mental health care. I'm going to tell a short story, and the reason I ask for your support, as you will be seeing some letters and newspapers and stuff that I do to promote thoughtful care for individuals of a serious mental illness. My son, two years, 10 months, and 12 days ago, became homeless. I followed the advice of mental health professionals, and it was deemed that my son was too dependent on my structure for his existence. So he tried to make it on his own. He became homeless, he was emaciated, was off his medication. He had been seen by the mental health professionals, but they did not capture his particular dilemma as they were supposed to. And I took him in and started to get him fed and was nurturing him back to his medication compliance. And he had a good day on a Monday, helped around the house, we sat down, had supper. He watched TV from 6:30 to 7 o'clock at night, stood up and says, "Dad, love you, I'm going to bed." And I says, "I love you too, son." He went to bed, and I was actually in the middle of typing a letter to a state senator regarding the need for housing and better care for those who are mentally ill. And he came out of his bedroom pouring a soda can down the hallway. And I said, "Son, was there a bug in there?" Because I knew he had been in a psychotic episode and probably was hallucinating and having delusions. And I heard nothing back from him, so I turned around to acquire some paper towels and wipe it up. And as I was turning around, my son came on a mission to attempt to kill me. And the reason I have such passion in this, and I need to tell this story so you understand the level of my understanding of this, that through that process of him profusely assaulting me, caught me totally off-guard, my son would never, in his right mind, ever raise a finger to his dad. He loves me. It came to the point where I had this sensation, I couldn't defend myself, that my right eye was falling out. And all I could do was stay calm to the best of my ability, curl up in a ball like you were getting attacked by a bear, and continually try to connect with my son by calmly saying, "Joseph, you need to stop. Joseph, you need to stop." And it was down to the point that when I heard ribs broke, that I didn't think I was going to survive, and I actually resigned myself to meet God, that this was the way I was going to die. I've not been a real religious person in my life, but I have to believe that at that point in time, there was a definite divine intervention. My son quit, walked out of the house like nothing ever happened. He didn't have any recollection of that for two months until they showed him the pictures of what he did. He was so upset with himself, he was placed on suicide watch for quite some time. So since then, that has been my purpose in life. I had a very successful career as a systems engineer in technology. I was one of the best-respected engineers in the country, working for IBM. I even worked on some of the predecessor to what is now IBM's flagship artificial intelligence called Watson. But this is a position that chose me, so I best understand from the ground up where my son fell through the cracks in this process, and can understand the processes and the services that are in place that need to change to help those individuals that suffer a severe mental illness. You had testimony in here from a group of people that have been through the drug courts. The difference in those individuals is that they are treating the recovery of their illness. Addiction is an illness. In the past, we have only treated their illness. Statistically, we have a DARE program, and I'm sorry if I'm running over time. If you'd like me to wind down, I will, but...
Need to kind of wind down.
Okay, sorry. But anyway, some of the things I'm working on is legislation that is common sense, that helps us individuals who are the caretakers. Because ultimately, when they're done in the mental health care system, the people who are actually the maintainers of their recovery are their loved ones. We need to have things done so that we can better take care of them. One of the issues that I'm promoting and hoping to pass in legislation this year is a psychiatric advance directive. It's House Bill 607. You can look that up, and it is a simple thing. No different than if you become unhealthy, ill, go to a hospital, and you tell the hospital, "These are the things that I want done in the event that I am incapable of making decisions for myself." This is no different, except for it's for specifically mental illness. And for some reason, we can't get the mental illness stuff recognized as well as a real illness. So that's one of the things that I'm actually doing. Another issue is, and this is my last one I'll present, is power of attorney. There is no place in any county in the state of Georgia that an individual will have a crisis and remain contained in that county. No county has a continuum of facilities that the individual remain in one county. Therefore, you have power of attorney, and if there's something that needs to be handled in another county that he was sent to, you have to go through a zillion different hoops to get that certified in that county to be recognized that you have power of attorney there. One of the things I hope that we can promote and enact in some form of legislature is standardization across the state that would help us individuals better take care of our loved ones. So I will wind this down, and thank you for your time, and I look forward to representing a fine community in Paulding County in the issues of mental health care.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Benson, for representing Paulding County.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, under invited guest, we're pleased to have Ms. Rita Norris, the Carole Link's Board of Directors Chair, to give us an update on Carole Link in Paulding County. Some exciting things, I know, Rita.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to need help. Many of you have heard me before, I'm Rita Norris, I'm the Chairman of the Board for Carole Link of Northwest Georgia. Looking at the building right ahead of you is a fruition of a four-and-a-half-year dream. For four-and-a-half years, Guy Skoll, members of the board, have worked to bring a nonprofit 501(c)(3) health clinic to Paulding County. 625 West Memorial that you're looking at right now is our new home to advance this... So sorry. Just click. Okay, yeah. This is a sign that we're very proud of. We're opening November 6th. Now, we're going to open as a very limited clinic to begin with. We're going to start out with an afternoon on Tuesdays from 1:00 to 6:00, and we're going to be open from Saturdays from 8:30 to 12:30. We are looking to expand, but it's totally dependent upon volunteer help to help us. We are 100% volunteer-driven, and because we're 100% volunteer-driven, that means that our providers, nurses, MPs, PAs, administrative nurses, all are volunteers as well. And so as they step forward, as our clients step forward, we will be opening up expanded hours and more hours. But more importantly, what I'd like to offer is this, and that is this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00, this coming Monday from 4:00 to 6:00, we're having a grand opening. It's a very soft grand opening. We promise to feed you. May not be your Level 1 high-dollar meal, but I haven't ever heard too many people decline pulled pork sandwiches. And since this is a campaign year, I'm sure there's been lots of pulled pork sandwiches sort of spread around the area. So we're going to just, we're not political, but we're medical, and we'd like to have you come. On Sunday, we're going to have a bouncy house, so if you're too old to get in there yourself, bring your grandkids, your children, let them bounce, and you can tour the facility. But basically, I want to say thank you to the community. I want to say thank you for everyone who has stepped forward at this point in time to help us. We have had some wonderful companies that are beyond just the fact that we've shown up, that has said, you know, I'll use an example. I invited a painter friend of mine who has painted most of my community, and I wanted him to either give me a reduced price on paint so that we as volunteers could slot paint all over the darn place, or give me a quote to reduce the price that he would normally charge. Now, this man's an individual contributor. If he doesn't work, he doesn't eat. I have a 3,200-square-foot building, and when he walked in, he says, "Rita," he says, "When you approached me two years ago," he said, "I thought, yeah, right." And then he says, "When you came back to me two years later and you're still working on the same thing," he says, "You had to have something going on." He says, "I'll paint your building for you." He says, "You pay for the paint, he says, "I'll paint your building for you." This man went without work for a week to paint our building. This is just one example of the largesse that we've seen in this county, and it's more to come. I know there are a whole lot of people out there that want to help us that just don't know about us yet. But let me tell you, since I'm a week and a half, two weeks out from opening, I could use any help that you all want to give me. And so, thank you. I told you I would not come back until I had something to tell you. I hope to think this is good news, and I really hope that all of you come with a little bit of an appetite, either Sunday or Monday. The chamber is going to be with us on Monday evening at 4:00 to do the ribbon cutting, and I ask for your support, just not today, but in the future. And as Mr. Benson said, we know that there's a lot of people out there without insurance. We're targeting the adult, and I thank you, thank you, thank you, and I look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita, so much. What an endeavor. I would like to move the reports in committees ahead of the bid awards. I know there's hard-working people in here like Eric Johnson, who'd like to get his report done, so if there's...
I'll make a motion to do that, Dave.
Second.
A motion in the second to move reports from committees ahead of bid awards. All those in favor, say aye. Here's five of them. So, under reports from committees and departments, Mr. Eric Johnson from CTS Conference Program Services to give us an update on the jail.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
See if I can work, just see if I can find our... How about that? Good morning. We're here to give you a quick update on the progress of the jail project. We've got a lot to cover here, we'll try to move through pretty quickly. And we've got some invited guests, too. We have Mr. Dave Miller and Barry Roszewski from NOVA Environmental Engineering, and they'll be talking on one of the topics here in this presentation. So, let's see here. Now I did it. See, then, I was getting really kind of confident with this. Did I do it? Okay, there we go. Golly, it's a miracle. So, the jail program. We currently, again, here's the, or if you want to get any information, pauldingjail.com. The picture you see right there is of the progress thus far, and what you see there is Precast being installed. That is Metromont, whose headquarters is here in Hyrum, Georgia. They've been a great partner. We'll talk about some other issues with the Precast, but they've just been tremendous here, working with Turner Construction and Wakefield Beasley to provide the Precast for the entire job, which is wonderful. So, again, we'll get some progress photos. I know you can see it from the camera on top of the courthouse, but here's some closer pictures. These are footings that were pouring, and you see some utilities, some underground plumbing, more underground plumbing and electrical. That's all proceeding very well. More Precast, and we have tried to, from a schedule standpoint, working with Metromont on a lot of this stuff, so you're going to see a lot of this stuff coming up out of the ground pretty quickly. One issue that we're dealing with, with Metromont early, is the aesthetics of the sides of the building that'll be facing Memorial and basically Dallas, Georgia. We've created an environment where we kept a lot of the trees to where it's protected now, that side, but I've done this for a long time. A lot of y'all point towards Carroll County's jail project. Way back when, that sucker was so far out, they didn't care what it looked like, they didn't want to spend any money. Well, guess what? It's right in the middle of things today. So hindsight, maybe we should have done something, they didn't want to spend the money, but here we are. So we're taking the step to put, work with Metromont to put these patterns in that Precast that one day can be painted if we so choose, either before we finish completion or afterwards. So we've taken the steps and met with the city of Dallas, and Scott Green and Bruce Gold have done a great job with them to get their approval, and the sheriff, I know, went to some meetings to get the city of Dallas to approve aesthetically what this facility looked like. So it is in an ordinance zone designed downtown. I'm not sure what the district they call it, but we're in it, and we dealt with the city on that. So more progress photos, as you can see, digging, rock blasting and drilling. And I know, again, we have invited Dave Miller and Barry to talk about the rock drilling and blasting, and we'll give you a very in-the-weeds detailed description of it, and they'll stick around as long as you'd like. After they present, I'll have some more slides to share with you, but if you want to take some time and talk about the rock, we certainly can, and they're two foremost experts on this. Talk about the budget real quick. Again, we're not looking for any approval today. We'll probably come back in November for approval. This is an update, let you know what we're doing. So what's changed on this is we've moved basically $700,000 from the owner's contingency and moved it up into the CM contract. We haven't done that officially, but we're here to report that we will be requesting at least that. And the $700,000 we're looking at right now is basically for the Precast changes we need to make in light of our dealings with the city of Dallas, and the other is for the conformance set of documents, which we always told you about. When we go to a GMP, the construction documents are not 100%, but we have assumptions and clarifications inside that. We do our best to marry things together to where it's a $0 change order, where there are some changes that needed to be made to get to that 100% construction documents, and that's what, there'll be a change order for that as well. So that's what the $700,000. You see below the amount... You see below the amount short to fund COR 6818, that will deal with a lot of the rock issues, and we'll get Dave and Barry to talk about that, but right now, we had a, if you recall, the first number we came to you with was $1.5 million, and also reported at that time that we're looking at different scenarios and moving the buildings. We were talking with the sheriff's office, operationally, would it impact them to build on top of the rock? Well, we're here to tell you that that number has come down significantly. The estimate that we're showing now is $595,000, but we're here to report that we think it's going to be a good bit less than that, too, based on results of the blasting, but I want to get into that because we have the two experts. But that's kind of where we are with the budget thus far. So, the three things that we're talking about, again, unforeseen subsurface conditions, the 595, we feel is going to be less than that. The Precast panel changes, the 290, that is a real number, and the conformance documents, as of right now, 632, we think that's a real number. There's two or three. When we come to you next, for the formal change order, we'll go into really two or three items in that conformance documents that we're dealing with. So, anyway, that's change order six. So, again, I'm going to talk about all three of these, but first, we'll talk about the rock. This is kind of where it started, and you can see we've already gotten three credits that have brought it back down to 595, and at this time, I'd like to bring up Dave and Barry to go through these next slides that they helped us prepare, so they can better explain to you in the least amount of effort what's going on out there. But again, well, they'll stick around as long as you need to, they need to, to answer any questions on this.
Change the slide with the mouse?
Yeah. There you go.
All right. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting us join you today. I'm Dave Miller. I'm a chief engineer of NOVA. Barry Rozeski, my business partner, is in charge of our construction materials group. We're also two of the founders of NOVA, and we'd like to express our appreciation to Paulding County. You've been a good client and a good friend to us over the years, and we're doing what we can to help mitigate your risk and protect your money. That's one of our goals. So let's talk about rock and what we're finding. There were some large numbers that Eric has alluded to, that were put out on the table early on. We've actually gotten onto the site and have done more investigation, both soil test boreings and air track associated with the blasting operations. What we're finding is that the rock are outcrops, they're pentacles. They're not big domes of rock or big sloping surfaces of rock. They're pentacles or spires of rock that pop up in rather well-defined areas. If you look at the drawing that's in front of you, we found it in five areas. We've got, the first two we found are the small areas that are over on the west, that are in the building footprint. Those are about 25 by 30 feet, so smaller ones, the bigger ones, 35 by 35 feet. These are really rough dimensions. These aren't really squares in the field, obviously. They're odd shape. The largest one to the left, as we go to the east, is an area that's about 75 feet by 100 feet. Those are the three that are in the building. Then we've got two more outcrops of rock that are up in the parking areas, one that's to the northeast and one that's to the north. Before I tell you how we've investigated and what we see in terms of the top of the rock, the two that are in the center of the building have already been drilled, they've been blasted, they're being excavated. The large one that's to the left has also been drilled and shot, so we've had four shots within the building. The parking rock that's to the northeast has been drilled, half of it's been shot. We should shoot the other half of it today. And then they are finishing the area to the north. Hopefully, we'll finish drilling today. If it doesn't finish today, it'll be done tomorrow, and then that rock will be shot. So by the end of this week, we should have had all the rock drilled and shot, and hopefully, when Eric comes back to you the next time, we'll have a really hard number on the quantity. So one of the things we've done is we've gone out to investigate, how did this rock occur? Why was it not in the boreings? Well, as you can see, when we finally plot where the rock is, the rock areas plot up between the boreings. They don't plot up underneath the boreings. But 29 boreings on this site, they're spaced 100 to 150 feet apart. It's a pretty traditional layout of boring locations. This site's just unusual, and that all the rock seems to be popping up between the boreings. Usually you have a boring that at least clips the edge of the rock. This site, it didn't happen. When we got the call from Eric, Eric, help me, how do I?
Just roll it.
Just roll it? Other direction. We went back to this large area that's over on the left, near B-12, to do some additional boreings. This is a blow-up of the area. The boring, you can see B-12R at the bottom of our new boring, these are supplemental boreings. We went back to the same location. We're doing GPS layouts, so there's always a little bit of offset. GPS is good to 10 to 15 feet, but we went back and we drilled B-12 again, and then set up a grid, and within this grid, there's a large rock outcrop. If you went out on the site last week, you could see the rock on the ground surface, so we included that within the grid. And then we drilled with soil test boreings. And you see the proximity of some of these boreings to that rock outcrop. The boring that's in the upper right-hand corner, which is boring AO4, is 10 feet away from the rock outcrop. That's the driller who's drilling AO4. You can see the shiny rock. I don't, see if I can help the folks in the audience. That's the rock outcrop. The hole's coming over here 10 to 12 feet away. So we've got rock at the ground surface, 10 to 12 feet away. He's drilling down 18 feet before he finds rock. So this isn't a gentle sloping rock surface. This is a cliff of rock. We see the same thing over as we go to the west, the next boring to the west is AO5, which is about 25 feet away. Again, if you're looking at the photo, AO5 would be right about over in here, 20 to 25 feet away from that rock outcrop, and we go down 17 feet before we hit rock. We see the same thing as we move to the south, which is off the screen. We go down, we move over 25 feet or so, and we drill down, and we hit rock at 20 feet. So it's, it looks like a pinnacle or a mesa of rock that comes up. It's not a contiguous dome of rock, which makes it hard to figure out where you're going to put your boreings, and how can you hit them all? If I'm standing on rock here, and Commissioner Crowe has got rock underneath him that's 20 feet in the ground surface, if I put a boring there, it says it's okay. If I put a boring here, I'm on top of rocks. So it becomes very complicated and complex on this site. Subsequently, we've come out to do air track boreings. Let me make a quick note. This concept of a pinnacle or a knoll of rock has occurred in this area of Paulding County before. This is a photo from 2007, when this complex was being constructed. There was a detention pond that's constructed over to the, turn around, over to the east, and in the southern end of the detention pond, there was a rock outcrop that was encountered, and you can see it looks similar to what I've described. It's got very sharp edges, they drop off quickly, it's got an irregular surface to it. We think this type of rock outcrop is what we're finding underneath the current jail site, both in the building and in the parking area. So we come out to air track. Air track's being done with a rotary percussion driller. This is a large drag, air track rig, it's a SmartTrack T40. Many of you have seen these on the sides of the highway when they're drilling for roadways. They spin a drill bit down under with percussion with air, and when it hits something hard, it starts to bang on, just like a jackhammer does. So you spin it down to blow the soil up, and if you look, you can see little brown mounds of soil where he's blown the soil out. Then it gets into rock, and it starts doing a jackhammer to take the rock out and put a hole down in, so you can set your charges. The question is, where's that top of rock? What do you call it if you're getting into rock below the ground surface? We've got an engineer, that's NOVA engineer, is standing on the drill rig with the subcontract driller, and every day, they agree at this hole, we hit rock five feet down in the ground. We both agree on it. So we don't have an instance at the end of the job where NOVA says the rock's down 12 feet, and the driller says it's down two feet. No, we agree on it, every day, on every hole, as it's done. The surveyors are coming out to the job site and telling us at this elevation, you're at, in this particular case, you're at elevation 1,008, your subgrade's at elevation 1,000. We want the site blasted down to 995, so the driller and the contractor know, I've got it blast down at least 13 feet. Now, why do we pick five feet below subgrade? And so we can get the foundations and the utilities in. It's not just taking it down to the subgrade, because if you take it down to the subgrade, you still have to dig a hole in rock to put in foundations. So it's much faster and less expensive to do mass blasting to get that rock out than to do individual blasts at footing locations. I've put some of the data up, which will again reinforce the variability in the rock, and I know it's hard for you in the audience to read it. Hopefully, it's easier for you to read on the screen. If you look at, say, the top line, which is B1, that's just a point. That's not a column location. This is the driller at NOVA have come up with their own grid. These grids, the boreings are, the drill holes are spaced five to six feet, five to seven feet apart. We have boring B1, and if you look, you can see that you hit rock pretty, right around 955. You're not going to have much rock above the elevation. If you look at, go down to the table and look, oh, two-thirds of the way down, at C1, you can see that you're at rock at 1,006. This is 11 feet of rock difference, six feet away, in a bore hole, in an air track hole. Again, it's just like what we saw in the soil test boreings. Rock may be 10 feet here, it could be 20 feet right there. And you'll see it, the same thing at the bottom of the table, too. Again, these are going down a grid point where you compare, say, C1, C2, C3, C4. One through three look like they're a plateau, they're all at the same level. Then you move over six feet, five or six feet, to get to C4, and it drops off the edge of the cliff again. So this is, this is the type of rock profile we have. It's not a dome, it's not sloping, it's lots of peaks and spikes. We took all of the data from this one area, this is just one area, and have plotted it up as a 3D profile. If you remember that large rectangle over on the east side of the site, B12s to the south, B11s to the west. We've plotted it up, we've taken all the air track data, and we've color-coded it. The color codes where it is in red is where you have rock above subgrade. It's rock above elevation 1,000. The areas that are in yellow are where rock exists above elevation 995. So they're blasting the yellow and the red areas. And then the green areas are just where rock is below 995. It may be at 992, it might be at 987, it may be at 975. It's just below the depth of blasting. But if you, and we've also plotted up the rock outcrop, which, if you look at how the rock falls off, it looks very much like what we saw and drew our conclusions from with the soil test boreings, that the rock is a little plateau and it drops off. You've got valleys, you've got spikes. This is the same area, but what we've done is we've walked around 180 degrees, and now we're at the northeast corner, looking back southwest, just so you can see the other side of that ridge of rock. And again, it looks similar. You see lots of spikes, you see a valley that runs through the center, and then it drops off to the edges. We've seen the same things in the other air track areas that we're drilling and blasting, that you see these spikes, and you move over five and 10 feet, and it's dropping five, 10 feet as it goes down. So it's a very irregular rock surface. It's both good and bad. It's bad that you have rock at all, it's sort of good because it's irregular, and there's less rock to be encountered. We are, in terms of where we are in the blasting operation, they have drilled all four of the first areas. The only area that's left is the northern, let me scroll back. The northernmost area in the parking, up near A4, A5, that is between 50 and 60% drilled as of yesterday, should finish drilling today. If it runs over, it'll be tomorrow. There's one blast left in the second parking area, and one to two blasts left in that area. So in a nutshell, we've had five blasts. By the end of the day, we should be at blast number six, and by tomorrow, we should be at blast number seven, which should wrap up the blasting on the site. The numbers we're calculating, we still have to do our final internal QA, and we always want to sit down with the blasting subcontractor at the end and make sure his numbers match our numbers, and we're signing off on what the top of rock is, and the ground surface is, and the blast elevation is. We'd always like to compare your math, that still has to be done. But the numbers we're generating are going to be less than the number that's being carried in the budget. So when Eric says he thinks it's going to be less, I would concur with him. We think when we come back in here, you'll see a smaller number. Questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for the detail in that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is this information available on pauldingjail.com?
It's not right now, but it will be.
Yeah, I know, I've heard a lot of feedback about the rock situation at the project, and if this information's available online, I think it'll be helpful to a lot of people.
We'll upload it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dave. Lot of information there, so thanks for bearing with us. And again, the reason NOVA is out there, two things. First, when we do soil boreings, if we happen to catch rock, that's just a plus. That's not the reason we do soil boreings. Soil boreings are to get the bearing capacity of the soil for the structural engineer. So if you saw where those soil boreings are, those are, we have structural specs, and the structural engineer actually lays out where they want those boreings, and that's why we go out there. Fortunately, sometimes we catch it, sometimes we don't. If we do catch it, then we'll usually call back in and say we need to do more boreings in this area to see if we can find more rock or the severity of it. So, and the second thing is, the reason NOVA's out there this long, obviously, is, I'll just lay it out this way, is their reputation. I know it's been in question, but as you can see, they're out there very diligently. And the second reason they're out there is because we've asked them to make sure that whatever, the best way to deal with this rock the most expeditiously and from a cost standpoint is done, and you don't pay a penny more than you should, to remediate this rock. End of story. That's why NOVA's here. We've got the two heads of NOVA here, and they're engaged, and so we appreciate you guys coming out. And again, we'll make any of this information available on pauldingjail.com, for sure. So, the other two issues that we talked about, changes are the Precast panels. We've kind of talked about that in detail, but there is the detail on it and where it is. And the second thing is the conformance documents, and as you can see, there's two big issues. One is plumbing, and the other is earthwork and utilities. We, when we realized, we realized that some of this Precast needed to look a little bit better than it did, okay? And so that change right there is in response to that long-term goal that this looks pretty nice from the city of Dallas. I think it was the right thing to do. So that's what that issue is right there. Everything else went really, really well. Turner worked well with us, got a lot of their stuff from, they had a lot of holds in their GMP, and took a lot of the costs in these conformance documents. What they have is their construction contingency, which is inside their GMP. So Turner worked really well with us and Wakefield Beasley to keep this number to a minimum. So, again, this is a lot of detail on how we went through all the conformance documents. Thought you might want to have it for your reading pleasure one evening. Burn pit. So we've talked about this. We have relocated it out of the burn pit, and we'll update you more if there's any impact. There's no impact to schedule, and cost, we don't believe so either, but anyway, we just want to let you know it's, we've coordinated that with the sheriff's office on where the right place to put it from that point, so. Again, construction progress update, I showed you some pictures. The underground mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is still underway. The foundations are underway, and Precast panels, you see them going up, and that is all on schedule. So, saw a bunch of double Ts coming in, as I was driving up, too. So that's, it is, things are moving. You'll see things coming up, once we get out of the ground, you'll see things coming up very, very quickly. Schedule up, critical path, blasting, obviously. Infill, remove rock, foundations, should be finished up mid-December. And structure, again, all the Precast hopefully will be done by February of next year. Still looking at final completion, April of 2020, but again, we're, we continue to work with Turner on the schedule, and we'll have a schedule update for you as well with a copy of the schedule for our next meeting, too. Here's an elevation, that will actually be brick. That hasn't changed. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions. Again, we're not looking for any approval today, just trying to give you an update of where things stand.
Any questions?
So Eric, the cost of the rock's not going to be what we thought it was going to be originally, it's going to be a little bit less, right?
Yes.
And did I understand that one of the reasons for that is because we're actually being able to put the rock on our own property and not having to haul it off?
Yes, sir. Two things. One, it's, as, and I've alluded to this before when we talked about the training center. The training center actually is on a dome, that's why we didn't blast there. we didn't blast there. But out in the training, out in the firing range, it was spired. So we did, we did knock those off. This is all spires instead of a dome, so the, the mass rock is going to be less. And when we do blast it, it is able to be mitigated on-site. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I want to ask a question. We've got a long way to go, so.
Yes, sir.
I know about the on-time.
Hmm?
The under, under-budget does concern me.
Yes, sir.
And we're taking some steps to make sure that's taken care of too. Just want to make sure at the end of the day that Paulding County citizens get the jail that they need to have. It's going to last us a long time. So I guess what I'm saying, Gary, is I want to make sure we're not having any kind of shortcuts anywhere to make up any differences.
Not yet.
If we need to know today.
No, sir. I was just kidding, Sheriff.
If we need to know today something.
There's been no cuts in the program.
That's going to go on six months from now when I'm not sitting here, or a year from now when I'm not sitting here. I just want to make sure that the public knows what's going on and that Paulding County gets the jail that we need to have. So, you know, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir, we do. There has been absolutely no discussion in cut a program from what was involved in the GMP. Not to my knowledge. And I don't believe, I believe I would have gotten a call from the sheriff or chief deputy hunting if that was brought up to the table.
And, and I'm not really, and I'm not putting Gary or Mr. Hutton on the spot. I'm not really looking at them for that answer. I'm really looking at you.
Yes, sir.
For that answer.
And I'm not ready to answer it yet. I'll be back in November, but to today, and I don't anticipate going back to the sheriff and cutting this program from what is in the GMP.
Okay. And if there's something that we see, or you see, or the sheriff sees on the horizon, I want to know about it in the next 60 days before I leave office.
Yes, sir. You have my commitment.
I don't want something coming out that was said that we didn't know, or said that we knew and it didn't come out in public. I want it out here in public before I leave. We've got two more meetings.
Yes, sir. I, I think the sheriff and I have been consistent on the message that the news is the news. You're going to get it, to the best of my knowledge. And if something changes, we will let you know.
Okay. Sounds great. Keep that website going.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
We're going to stick with reports from departments and bring in Ms. Lori Ashmore, Water Systems Director for water extension updates.
Okay, there we go. Well, okay, there we go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lori.
Twenty, 21 months ago, we brought to this board a policy for water line extensions. We were dealing with numerous old petitions that were in a three-ring binder that dated back 30 years ago. And so we were, we were looking to, how do we address water line extensions, recognizing that we still have a number of roads in Paulding County that don't have water service. Just in general terms, the policy said it needs, says it needs to be economically feasible in accordance with state and local requirements located on right-of-way, that the property owners are responsible for petitioning for that extension. The big one is that we require that the property owners have a commitment of 70% of the, the owners committing to establish and maintain water service. And then we review cost and viability of the, of the project. So at this point, we have completed two water line extensions, Pine Ridge Lane and Overlook Trail, and we have two petitions that we are currently, currently working with and, and moving forward. Just very briefly, wanted to give you a construction cost update on those. The two that are completed, Pine Ridge Lane and Overlook Trail, we extended about 12,000 feet of water line and, at a, at a total cost of about $1.4 million. We have 40 new customer connections as a result of it. And we have, and we have completed that. We have, we estimated going into this project, we've been estimating based on $90 a foot. You'll see that Pine Ridge Lane came in under that, Overlook Trail in excess of that. That reflects the, the differing rock conditions in, along those two extensions. We have expended our funding for fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18 on those two projects. The two additional extensions that we have had petitioned are Mount Mariah Road and Buchanan Highway. We are projecting, and Buchanan Highway is a new one. We have not, I don't think I have discussed that one with, with any of you at this point. But we have, it's about $810,000 to extend water on Mount Mariah, about 9,000 feet of water line. To be able to accomplish that, it would take the entire fiscal year 19 funding and a significant portion of fiscal year 20 funding. And then Buchanan Highway behind that would be 7,000 feet, serving another 23 customers. And that would be fiscal year 20 remaining funds and fiscal year 21 to accomplish that project. We are, and, and right now, we're carrying those at, at $90 a foot. But wanted to, Mount Mariah Road, we have surveyed that line, and that next step would be a detailed design. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer them.
Lori, do you have the petitions at 70% for both of those?
Yes. We don't, we actually do not add anything to our lists at this point without that 70%. Buchanan Highway actually brought in a list on their, brought in a petition on their own forms, and we sent them back to make sure that people realize that in petitioning, what they were committing to.
Any other questions?
Lori, let me tell you, thank you for what you've done and for working with me in post-four on this. I was not aware of Buchanan Highway. I'm glad to see that. Mount Mariah Road, I'm glad you gave an update on that, and that will be moving along. You're telling me at this time, until we get next year's funds, we're going to be held off on, on Mount Mariah?
We, we would not be bidding that until later, late in the fiscal year. Yes. We, because we need, we need next fiscal year's funding to even be able to, to be able to complete that project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to back up now and pick up bid awards, the, Ms. Tabitha Pollard bid awards today. Number one is discuss action to enter into a construction manager at risk contract with Brassfield and Gory for the Richland Creek Reservoir Park. Ms. Pollard.
Good morning. There are quite a few bid awards, so I'm going to read a lot today just because I'll miss something if I don't. So, a few weeks ago, we had, we solicited proposals for the reservoir park. And Corry Engineering, as well as Michael Justice, are here to discuss any of those specifics. After scoring of the firms, Brassfield and Gory was the clear-cut choice from, I think it was unanimous that they, that they be brought on board. So they conducted an interview last week, and I think it remained unanimous that Brassfield and Gory was the correct firm to complete this process. What they're asking for today is a C-MAR contract to be awarded, and they will work with Corry Engineering as, and be brought up to date on the design. They will work to value engineer and reduce cost as much as possible, bid the project, and bring back a GMP for your approval. And as I understand, that would come back probably later this year. I think they want to start as quickly as possible to complete the entrance road, the boat ramp, and the boat docks because they have, they must be in place for the reservoir before the end of 2019. And this entire park will be 209 acres. We will, it will be phased in, so they will do the, the entrance road, the, the part, the pieces that have to be completed now will be done in phase one. And then you'll find out in the GMP what will be done in phase two or thereafter. So do you have, if you have any questions, again, Eddie Wade is here with Corry Engineering, as well as Michael Justice. And Lori, we have quite a few benefits of this project.
Any questions?
I don't, I don't know if I have any questions, but I do appreciate the, the process there. You three there, sitting there, as well as the rest of the committee. Excited to see this go and, and be done, be done well, as we've discussed previously.
And we also have a representative from Brassfield-Gory as well. I left that one out. Sorry.
Excited about that. It's going to be a great park. Bid, bid award.
I just said, "thank you."
Bid award number two is discuss action to award the 2019 Line Striping 1 Project to the low bidder Mid-South Striping in the amount of $90,898.40. Ms. Pollard.
This is a, a routine item. Each year, we bring to you a paving contract, and then we also bring back a strapping contract. This will strap 24 miles of roadway. We received four bids, and we're recommending award to the low bidder Midstate Strapping. DOT did work hard to get some competitiveness in this project, and they were very successful. So, do you have anything on that?
No, I'm just, are you answering any questions?
We're just available for questions.
I will ask a question, George. The backup material says this, that this bid is significantly lower than what our estimate was. Just maybe, maybe not a detailed of why, but are we confident in the, in the work and the job to be done at this price?
Yes, I am. We've used Midstate before in the past, had very good results, very good communication. Line strapping over the last few years has gone up tremendously. It's very volatile. There's very few contractors in the metro area that do this. Midstate's out of Perry, Georgia, so they're middle Georgia, but they'll come up here and do the work. The one major contractor that is in this area, they don't really have a lot of competition, so their prices sometimes are a little bit higher, and that's what happened. We had bid this project out in January of this year, and when the numbers came back, it, it was way over our estimate. So we kicked it out and decided to look at ways to possibly reduce the cost. One of the ways we were able to do that is actually give it a longer timeline. You move up the timeline, jack up prices. You give a longer timeline, you'll get a better price. In this case, I've, you know, I'm comfortable with the price, the contractor, and the timeline.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Bid award number three is discuss action to award the Saddlebrook Farm Drainage Contract to the low bidder Tucker Grading and Hauling in the amount of $138,577.55. Ms. Pollard.
Okay, again, this is a DOT project. This work consists of installing French drains along with, along various sections of Saddlebrook Drive and curb and gutter and sidewalk repair as needed. We did have two participants, and we are recommending award to the low bidder Tucker Grading and Hauling. In the amount of $138,577.55.
Any questions or comments? Bid award number four is discuss action to award the Justice Center Drive Project to the low bidder Bartow Paving in the amount of $708,643.82. Ms. Pollard.
This project is also, this DOT project has also been talked about for some time, especially with the jail coming. And it will, this roadway will extend from West Memorial Drive to the Watson Government Complex. And we are recommending award, we, we had four partic, four participants in this process as well, and we're recommending award to the low bid Bartow Paving in the amount of $708,643.82.
Ms. Jones, when would they start that, you know?
I think once, you know, we sign the NTP and the contracts, we're, you know, within the next month and a half or so, I believe, we're ready to go. This is a nine-month project timeline on this. The length of roadway is .17 miles. We're building a standard 22-foot road with curb and gutter, sidewalk, that type of deal. So, yeah, we're, we're ready to go. And this is a SPOST-funded project.
Just curious, do you think people will cut through from Memorial over to 278?
Heaven forbid. No. Some people are going to, yes, people are going to use it. I think it's, it's a, it'll be a good roadway. It'll be a good designed roadway. It's, you know, this type of road, it's meant to accommodate vehicles. It's, it's designed for that. So I think it's, it's going to be a good addition.
Other questions? Bid award number five is discuss action to award the Raccoon Creek Bridge Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Southeastern Site Development, in the amount of $1379,454.
This bid is a little bit above my knowledge of, of a DOT project, so I'm going to just tell you about the bid process. We did have four contractors participate in the bid, and we are recommending award to Southeastern Site Development in the low bid amount of $1379,454. And without questions, I'm going to ask George to give you a little more detail about the project.
Yeah, again, we had brought this before to y'all back on June 26, where we accepted some funding from the Nature Conservancy in the Fish and Wildlife Service in the amount of $150,000. We asked you to sign an agreement with, for that, and you did. I've got some good news. In the meantime, we've actually added on an additional amount of funding, so now we're up to $325,000 from the Nature Conservancy in the Fish and Wildlife to go towards replacing this structure. So that's obviously, obviously a good thing. Out there, the existing structure was constructed in 1981. It's 37 years old. It's spalling in some places, needs some work. Under normal conditions, the water actually flows underneath the bottom of the culvert. It doesn't flow through the culvert. So obviously, not a good thing for fish passage, especially for, you know, endangered species like the Cherokee Darter and the Etowah Darter. So then that is why Fish and Wildlife and the Nature Conservancy have contributed towards this project because they have an interest in improving the conditions for fish passage. The project itself, it's one, it's .11 miles of road and bridge. The roadway itself is going to be 10-foot lanes with nine-foot, six-inch shoulders, and the bridge width itself is 36 feet, 5 inches wide. The numbers were a little higher than our internal estimate. However, we brought back to our design consultant, and they looked over the numbers, and they felt this was a reasonable bid to pursue forward with, with Southeastern Engineering. So we have a nine-month completion date from the NTP on this project also. It's in post-four, and I can answer any other questions if you have any, I hope.
We've been talking about this for a while.
Yes, sir.
Good to hear an update.
And again, on this one, I think we're, we're ready to go as soon as we can get the, the contract documents signed, sealed, delivered. It's, it's a good one.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bid award number six, discuss action to purchase a live-fire chute house from Total Range Solutions in the amount of $460,000. Ms. Pollard accompanied by Colonel Hutton?
Again, while, while this one has some interest to it, maybe, I'm not going to go into the details of it. The sheriff has requested to purchase a live-fire chute house. They have solicited several, and evaluated several different systems. So this will act- They have solicited several, and evaluated several different systems, so this will actually be equipment. And they have determined that they would like to proceed with the hinged system, and the cost is $460,000. So with that, if you'll give the benefits of your live-fire, live-fire chute house.
Yes, ma'am. The, we've been, we currently do have a live-fire chute house. It is at the old training facility out by the landfill. We built that, I want to say in 2001, maybe 2002, with inmate labor and unwanted and discarded tires and crush-and-run. And it has served us well, it's done very well for us. It is, is at its end of its life, and the folks of Seven Hills want us out of there. So, with our new training facility, we've discussed it in many different ways of potentially trying to build our own chute house again. But with technology and the advancement in, in, in the industry, and for safety reasons, we think this is one of our best options. We had a team of folks, I had two captains and a sergeant that went around to different facilities in the state, looking at different chute houses, different companies, things of that nature, to get ideas and see where we wanted to go with this. And we came in contact with TRS, and there's not one in the state of Georgia. However, we were able to talk to other agencies outside the state of Georgia that have this system. And the hinge-pin system, what it allows us to do, it allows us to change the floor plan of the, of, of the chute house within minutes, which will serve us for years and years down the road. One of the problems that we have with the chute house that we currently use, obviously being built out of tires and crush-and-run, we can't move the walls. And we do have places in that, in the, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we, we built it with inmate labor and, and, and us. It has areas in it that we cannot, basically are no chute zones and things of that nature. So the instructors have to be very highly on alert to make sure that, you know, nobody's shooting in that direction, there's no targets in that direction, things of that nature. With this, we'll have 360-degree coverage, except for the doorways, obviously. But with this hinge-pin system, again, we can change the floor plan multiple ways. We're still in the planning phase of working with the company to get what we want. They gave us the max price on it, and that's when I asked Ms. Tabitha if we could try to move forward. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to have, try to get somebody local to do the concrete workforce, instead of them coming in and doing the concrete, we won't have somebody do the grading and the concrete for us. And then also, instead of using their roofing system, we're going to try to, again, try to do that locally and have somebody here put the roof over it for us, which will just help protect and preserve the chute house in itself, so.
Basically, the cost of the system we're talking about is $460,000, and then the rest of it, the concrete and things you're looking at.
No, sir, that's, that is everything.
That's everything?
Yes, sir. The, the actual cost for the house is $390,000.
Okay.
The gentleman told me he would not exceed $390,000.
Okay.
Based on some rough estimates that we got, we don't have 100% quotes just yet. Talking with Ms. Tabitha and, and the rough estimates that we had, I'm very confident that we're going to come under this, this 460.
Okay. Because in the backup, it just says another $100,000, I guess, on concrete in the pole barn, is that correct? Or am I misreading it, Tabitha? I might be misreading it.
It would actually be about $70,000 is the rough estimate.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not to exceed the, the 460.
Okay, total.
Yes, sir. And it being a, obviously, it's a, it's a SPOSS project, we don't have this budgeted, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, both of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Under public participation on agenda items, we have no one under the consent agenda discuss action on one consent agenda item. Pull that page off of mine, can you read? Action to authorize the chairman to approve a light services agreement prepayment cost to Georgia Power Company in the estimated amount of $152,366 for a streetlight installation on Justice Center Drive. Mr. Jones. Okay. Would any of the post commissioners like to move that to regular business?
No, sir.
Okay, good to go. Under all business, we have none. Under new business, number one is discuss action to adopt amendments to the fund balance policy. Ms. Pollard's ready to go.
Okay, in 2011, I believe, is when we amended the fund balance policy due to several GASB, or a GASB requirement that placed categories within fund balance. So fund balance has non-spendable amount, it has a restricted amount, has committed fund balance, and it has an assigned fund balance, as well as an unassigned fund balance. And non-spendable, obviously, is something that there's no monetary, there, there is value to it, but you can't spend it. Restricted is what's restricted by external parties. Committed is what you actually commit, and it takes an action of the board to commit it, and it takes an action of the board to decommit. You have an assigned fund balance, which is basically where county manager or myself could go through and say, you know, this is an assignment. An example of an assignment would be next year's budget amount. So you actually approved next year's budget amount, we're going to assign, assign a portion of fund balance that you approved to, to cover that. And if there are any other expenditures that we are aware of, we can place an assignment on them, and on the financial statements, it lists that assignment. And then you have your unassigned. What this amendment does is it puts more language in the commitment. So it basically, when the board decides to go and construct a capital project and issue bonds or issue loans, it will, it will commit 5% of that proceed amount, so what was deposited into the construction account, it will commit 5% of that, of the fund balance, and that will stay committed until the project's complete. And when the project's complete, then it will again move to the unassigned fund balance. It doesn't authorize expenditure, it doesn't, it, it just commits some amount, like I said, the 5% of the proceeds amount, until the project's complete. And at this time, it would be moving it from unassigned up to a committed.
Yep.
If you have any questions.
I'd just like to say thank you, Tabitha, and thank you, Lonnie, for your work on this, and I appreciate it. It will make me sleep better.
Yeah, it will. You too, huh?
So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? New business number two is discuss action to amend the contract awarded to Parker Fiber Net in the amount of $287,677 to provide additional filter services along with Charles Hardy Parkway, and provide for a utility shed at the landfill. Mr. Lyons, will you come help us out with this one?
I'm going to start with this one, and then several, in June, you awarded a contract to Parker to install some fiber throughout the county, and it would circle around by the landfill, and there were several benefits for that, that project, and it was roughly a half a million dollars. This will, this is an expansion of that project, so this will, I will explain, but it goes, Macklin Road is included, as well as Charles Hardy, and the benefit, the two departments that will benefit are 911 and the water system from this specifically, and it will also expand our fiber network, as well as approve the construction of a utility shed at the landfill, should that be needed. And it comes at a, at, at a cost of $287,677, and it's basically an expansion of that project that you awarded in June.
Good morning. If I could elaborate on that, this agenda item. What we're trying to do is just take advantage of the pricing per foot that Parker provided us back in May. There were three bids that we opened up in May, the highest being over $1 million, and the Parker bid being $534,000. The closest bid to that was $733,000, so it's quite a bit of difference. So what we hope to do, and what we're asking for approval for, is to expend, extend the fiber network from Macklin Road, which has a public safety tower on it at this time, down to the new community, or the, the customer service center on business six. The water system uses our phone system now and part of our RRP system. We also want to provide security to that building. We can do that with a fiber optic network. We'll then take that down to the Civil Comet Trail and connect it into our existing wire, which will bring it back here. All told, this will help close the gap in between the two links, which will ultimately provide the resilient link in a closed network. The utility shed itself, we are negotiating for space within existing facility. Mr. Green and Mr. Leonard are helping us with that right, right now. But if we are unable to acquire the space we need, we'll put in a utility shed on that property to terminate our fiber. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, well. That is the conclusion of our regular business. We have a need for executive session for real estate personnel pending and potential litigation. See that there is no one who's signed up for public participation on non-agenda items, so with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate personnel, potential and pending litigation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Poundell, is our second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Colette, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0, we're headed for executive session.